March 23rd, 21. Meeting of the Zone Board of Appeals. My name is Marty Aikens. With us tonight, the co-chair, Mr. Cavares. Board member, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Ray Dell, Mr. Hamill and Mr. Frankel are with us. Mr. Chin is also with us. And I hope everyone can mute themselves unless they're talking. Make sure you run muted. I mean, you're muted. So it's your turn to talk. If you want to raise your hand, star nine, is it? So we can hear you and then you can speak. Under under tonight's I have a couple of things we have to do. Mr. Cavares, could you please make a motion or waive the reading for the minutes of the
The night.
Night. There you go.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to waive the reading of the minutes of March 9.
Second.
Second. On the motion, seeing none, all in favor, voice vote. Aye. Close. So moved. Under all business, oh, under new business, case number 21-7. Tremont Quincy 1 LLC for special permit variance. Demolish the existing structure on 71-69-70, 61 to 69 Hancock Street. I have a motion here to withdraw from the from the client. Mr. Cavares.
Mr. Chairman, matter number 21-7, Tremont Quincy 1 LLC for special permit and variances to demolish all existing structures and construct a 16-story multifamily building with three bottom floors. Primary devoted to parking on the premises number 71 Hancock Street and 61-69 Hancock Street. I make a motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, votes vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Pick them.
Marty, Mike, Charlie, Brian and John.
You got it.
Want me to call it?
Uh, no, we just did a voice vote. We're sorry. Let's take some dramatic turn tonight. The vice chair. His family's in the hospital. First of all, I want to thank you, Mr. Cavares, for your help during during what we went through the last week and a half.
You're very welcome, Mr. Chairman.
And getting this all done and get the paperwork that we needed to see what we had. 1026 C Streets. I'd like to call a case, old business, ZBA 2088. Paul Pinto for variance to construct an addition on the premise number 1026 C Streets. Is the applicant or representative here?
Mr. Aikens, yes, I am.
All right, Mr. Pinto, you have the floor. Nothing's changed since then, since we've all had this meeting and we've all talked. The only difference is lot six, I understand, is being bought by the two neighbors of yours. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and everything else is the same. And just so you guys know, we looked at all the tax bills and all this. And some of the tax bills haven't been paid. I talked to the owner. The two applicant, the applicant and his two neighbors were there. Phone call was made. And they're buying lot six, the neighbors are. Mr. Pinto now took lot six out of his application. So so all we're talking about now is giving him his whatever he needs here in his application, which is a variance because of the lot line, the way it comes up. And that's a lot that I know the city's never going to use. It's just, it's a, but if they have to get in there, they have a right to have nothing on there. If they, if they have to get in there or take down whatever's there that they want to get in there for. So after long time we've been at this. And Mr. Cavares can can tell you that dealing with the city and, you know, we've talked to the city solicitor, Mr. Timmons, and he says it's it's the city's lot, private or public, whatever you want on there. We own that piece of property. And it's ours. So the city does own the property. They're going to have a right to use to the middle of it until someone, something, someone or the city decides to use that piece of property. So it has no bearing on what we're talking about tonight, except for if we want to give them that variance for that 6.4 inches to the side of his, of his additions, which I'm I'm in favor of myself, looking at the property, looking at the way that is. He's going to put a, you know, it it drops about eight feet in the back there. So his, his downstairs basement is going to go over with a drop. It's still in the drop zone. And then he's putting addition in with the new front, as we all know. So I don't know if we have any comments. Mr. Cavares, you have any comments?
Do not, Mr. Chairman. I'm all set.
Okay. Mr. Ray Dell.
Just to confirm, wait, lot six doesn't matter anymore?
No, lot six is out. It's being bought by the two neighbors that are in the back. So they'll own that one foot piece of property down. They're going to divide it. How many feet of on his property, they're going to divide up to 7,000, however they feel fit. But I talked to Mr. Fow when he said, yes, it's being sold to the two neighbors. Lot six out of the equation.
Okay. I mean, I, you know, other than that, the plans seem fine as long as we're comfortable getting close to that paper street. You know what I mean?
Yep.
I just, the only concern I have with that is, you know, there have been issues in the past with people building on paper streets, including this one. Like there's, there's a structure on this thing. You know, so I think at some point in the future, the city needs to figure out what they're doing with all these parcels of land and either, you know, define it better. Or so we just don't have these neighborhood squabbles. It's not right for us to be in front of the camera for, for what amounts to, you know, city conveyancing issue, in my opinion, so.
Right, and I was, and I was, and you're right. And that's why I said, let's get to the end of this and find out what the real problem is and where it's going and how all the neighbors. So I went down to Metamall, me and Mr. Cavares went up and did the city stuff and got that all squared away. Talked to a few people, Mr. Fow included, and found out that between me and Mr. Cavares, we found out how this property was and how it worked out and how many times. But you're right. And people are using it. And if they're going to use that lot, I even asked, later I called up, which I should have told Mr. Cavares, but I haven't. I said, are you interested in just selling it, giving it to the two, two people that live there, splitting it up? And he goes, no. That's, if we have to get in there for some reason, fire or whatever, we want to get everybody to get in there and bring a truck in if we had to. And that was the answer. So, okay, the city owns the lot. What we're going to deal with now is 6.4 feet. So that's what we're dealing with after all of here.
No, I, I was just more saying, like, I have one in my, the back of my house, the same, you know, a neighbor moves a fence to the other side because they go right through it. And, you know, it created a firestorm in the neighborhood. So I'm just saying, at some point, the city needs to address these pieces of land that are just sitting out here.
Right, not being used when they could be taxable too. You're right. It could be taxable. If you split it up, let them pay taxes on it because it's just land sitting. And we dealt, we dealt with that in Houssen, that one that street, and it was all about moving the shed. So, you know.
Yeah.
And people spent, and the neighbor, it was a nightmare. And the people spent a lot of money in lawsuits. Lots of money. I mean, a lot of money to move a shed six feet, so.
And that's what I was trying to avoid here. I appreciate the neighbors coming to an agreement because I felt like dragged on for years in a lawsuit and cost a bunch of money, including to the city. So I appreciate the fact that they found a resolution. I'm in favor as long as, you know, as long as that lot six is out of the equation too.
Yep, lot six is out. Mr. O'Brien?
If Mike's satisfied, I'm happy.
Okay. And Mr. Russell Chin?
I have no questions.
All right. Can we have a motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Any one, one, two, three, four, five. Yeah, okay. Yeah, please, Mr. Cavares.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, matter number 20-88, Paul Pinto for a variance to construct an addition to on the premises number 1026 C Street, I make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
Second. On the motion, seeing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
And Marty Aikens.
Yes.
Mike Cavares.
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien.
Okay.
Brian Redell.
Yes.
Russell Chin.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mike, you have to go, I know. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Later, everybody.
Hey, Mike, good luck.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Further on to tonight's business, case number
I'm going to take off. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome, Mr. Pinto. You're all set. ZBA case 2075. Min Hanu and Fong Tron for a variance to extend the driveway on the premise number 80 Ren Terrace. Is the applicant or representative here?
Yes.
Who am I, who am I speaking with?
Min.
All right, Min, you have the floor. Tell, tell the board what you'd like to do, please.
Hi, yes. So I would like to have a driveway expansion on the side of my house for additional parking space for my boat and car.
What's going to be there? All driveway? Are you putting, are you putting all asphalt there?
Yes, I would like to pave it there, yes.
All the way up to your lot line?
All the way up to the existing deck.
In the back?
Yes.
On the side?
Yes.
Now, you have, you have, I don't know, two spots out front, four spots out front, correct?
Yes.
All right. And you, and all that water, I'm just saying, all that water coming down the back of your, back of your property. You, you asphalt that's going to be flowing all the way down. And as it makes a corner, it's going in someone else's yard mid. I, I'll tell you, asphalt, I wouldn't be in favor of. I don't know how the board feels. I'm just letting you know. I think it's, it's too much. You, you're taking, you're taking your lot. You got a lot of, lot of asphalt that's going to be on there if you do that. You're going right up to the neighbor's lot line. You're going down. It's, it's a lot, so. I'd even have to think about it if you put pavers in there. But some way to get that water into the ground.
About gravel?
Mr. O'Brien, how do you feel about this case? That's what, that's what he wants to do. He wants to pave the whole side of his house going up that between on, on the fence there.
Right. Is, is, is there a potential that you investigate whether you can put like galleys in there or something that'll absorb that water to a certain point? I mean, it's strictly downhill, so that's gravel or something that would support what you want to put in there, but there's got to be some way to, to manage that coming off of there. You know what I'm saying to you? What do you think?
Min, he's talking to you.
Yes.
What do you think of that?
Gravel instead of asphalt?
But also maybe with a galley?
Okay.
What it is, it's like a trench that has a cover on it?
Yeah, we can do.
That will catch the water and let it go back into the ground?
Yeah. We also have like a
trench, whatever, water holes.
You have a water hole?
So the, the plot plan, we were planning to do about a foot setback from the side of the house to leave an area for the water to drain.
Yeah, but I, I don't know if you're going to capture it, is what I'm saying. You're just going to keep it flowing, you know?
Flying down the hill.
It's, it's pretty steep when you come out, when you come off your property. So that's, that would be my concern about where it's going to end up. Because I'm sure that that yacht is absorbing a lot of it now in the grass.
Permission is one, two, uh, Frankel.
That's, that's my comment, okay?
Mr. Frankel?
Yeah, I'm not a giant fan of all that pavement. I think aside from the water issue, I don't think it looks particularly nice. For the neighbors, the neighborhood, it's, you've got plenty of parking there. Maybe permeable pavers with some type of nice plan with landscaping I would think about looking at with a drainage system, but not, not that way.
Yeah. Mr. Chin?
Right, I agree with the board members that once you put in the asphalt there, there's really no turning back in terms of the water. So you're either going to have to consider some type of engineering solution like Charlie suggested, some kind of type of drainage at the bottom. Some other solution with, with the paving system to let the water go through. I think that would be better.
Brian Redell?
Yeah, Brian. Brian. Oh, there you were, Brian.
Well, you're a five now? Oh, I didn't, um, I have no questions.
All right. Man, I think what they're saying is they want to see a better plan on how you can capture some of that water coming off that hill and not have, not have asphalt there. Put some sort of pavers there or something and come up with something that you can catch that water as it's coming off that hill. Because that's a big hill. Once it starts rolling, a big heavy storm, it's coming right past the property and right off.
Yes.
So I don't know if you want to do this a month from now. We can, can you have it done in a month? But I need those papers in here, a minimum of a week and a half, 10 days before you are coming before us. So you need six weeks? You need the end of April? When do you think you could?
Uh.
I know your boat's back there. And this is about putting your boat back there?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, all right.
Uh, probably about six weeks. I'll talk to my surveyor and see what he thinks too.
May, what are you good for, May? May 11th. How's May 11?
Is that on a Tuesday?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
All right. So Brian, can we move this to May 11th, please?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, regarding case number ZBA 20-75, Min Huang, Huang Trang for a variance to extend the driveway on the premises number 80 Ren Terrace. I make a motion to postpone the me, uh, to move the meeting to May 11th.
And this, this, this has been moved, this will be the third time you've come here. So we'd like to hear it that day. We don't want to keep moving and logging up the system, all right?
Yes.
Okay. Could I have a voice vote, please? Oh, is there a motion seconded?
I can move.
Seconded. On the motion, seeing none, all in favor, voice vote?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Close.
Aye.
So moved.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
All right, we'll see you May 11th. Thank you. Further on to tonight's agenda, old business, Gene Corrin for a variance for special permit floodplain to raise the existing structure and construct a new structure with less than required front yard setback to maintain the existing garage on the premises number 30 El Pot. Is the applicant or representative here?
Yeah, what are you reading?
I had a, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. I got the wrong, Jesus, God, help. Help me. I flipped the page. Flipped the page. I got the other one. I go, I thought we got rid of that for a while. New business.
No, 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 old business, old business, ZBA 26, 143 C Street.
I got the wrong, look at this sheet. I got it right here. Huh? No, we already had, we, we, we
No, C Street, the house.
143 CF.
There you go.
Is anyone here for 143 CF? Hello?
143 CF Avenue, attorney John Barland was trying to find a new attorney for the case because he is a judge and he can no longer handle this case. So if we could meet and continue it until May 11th and I'll reach out further.
Because we haven't heard anything. I haven't heard anything either. But I understand Mr. LaRoche met with, with the neighbor and then they talked about the house and they were going to do some changes. So, yeah, but I'd like to know if someone's going to even do this. I don't, I don't know. Is someone going to do this? Or not going to do it?
You want to find out to May 25th?
Yeah, but we got to, if we can know and like
I'm going to, I'll, I'll reach out to
Just so we can either take it off, we'll, we'll, we'll bring it up earlier and get rid of it and wait for them to come back. But someone's got to, yeah.
I think I can be dismissed without prejudice.
Yeah, that's all that should happen. Sorry. Could I have a motion now, Mr. O'Brien, to move this to May 11th, please?
What, you want to move it to May 11th? Is that correct?
Yeah, May 11th, in six weeks. You should know something by then at least.
Mr. Chairman, regarding case 20-60.
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
Regarding ZBA case 20-60, Robert Egan for a variance to construct a new home on the premises numbered 143 CF Quincy, I'd like to make a motion to rehear this case on May 11th.
I can move.
Seconding. On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. So moved. On the new business. Robert Gatnick for a special permit to use the property for kennel on 497 Beale Street. Is the applicant or representative here?
I'm here, yes.
You have the floor. Tell the board what you'd like to do.
We have a building at 497 Beale Street, the former Sam Perkins Medical Supply Building that we purchased back in October 2019. We have done some cleaning out of the building and have been working on trying to find a tenant to take a lease there. But obviously, under the circumstances of COVID, that effort slowed down considerably last year. We've been in ongoing discussions with a operator, dog daycare operator, that we would be partnering with to basically use the building as a dog daycare facility where we would take dogs in during the day. Taken out in small groups for walks in various locations around the area, whether it's Blue Hills or on the beach or Stoddart's Neck or wherever.
So what you're saying is you take, you're taking the dogs out of the area? They're not going to be walking?
Well, they go for, they go for walks in open spaces, in small groups. But, but there are dogs that stay, you know, at the facility while small groups are taken out for exercise. There will be some outdoor space as well to allow for outdoor exercise on premises, which is a portion of the existing parking lot. So it's about a, just under a 10,000 square foot lot. The building is just on, just around 4,000 square feet. So the balance of lot area is basically paved for parking.
Yeah, sorry.
Probably take a portion of the parking lot, remove the pavement, I'll put down some sort of grass and a fence and have an opening on that side of the building to allow in and out of the building and a secured outside of that, the interior of the building is pretty much just open space with a small interior office area. It would all be just renovated and reused in its existing configuration. We would be providing some pens and various areas cordoned off in order to separate the dogs from each other. And basically looking for a special permit for the use as it's required by zoning to have a a special permit approved.
Yeah. You know, we haven't talked about hours of operation. We haven't, we haven't talked about hours of operation. We haven't talked about mom and dogs you're going to have there.
Correct.
When's pickup, when's drop off? So the neighborhood knows what you're talking about, having doggy daycare.
Right. So you, it's a, it's a morning pickup and an afternoon. You know, we're picking them up and bringing them.
We need, we need hours of operation.
Hours of operation are like 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
So by 4:00 PM, you're saying there's no more dogs on the property?
That's correct.
All right. So people work till 5:00, 5:30. What are you going to do with them?
Well, by the time we leave the facility to bring them home, you know, the people will
You pick them up? Or do you have them dropped off there? How's it going to work?
We're going to be doing primarily pickup, yeah. So they won't
Primarily, we have to know. We have to know if that's the only way you're going to do
No, no, it's, it's about, it's 80% pickup, but in the circumstance where someone's unable to
No, 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 but we just got to know. People have to know that live in that area. That's all I'm asking these questions for. How many, how many, how much? You know, some people have 100% pickup. You're not allowed to drive there. There's not enough parking in the morning. So this is what we all have to know before we make decisions and the neighbors, before they're making their decision. Right, 80% pickup.
80% pickup. And we do have onsite parking as well to accommodate short-term drop off and pickup for the 20%.
All right.
Can I ask a question to the concerned neighbor?
Whoa, 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 whoa. You'll get, everyone will get their time. Calm down. Everyone take a breath. Everyone take a breath. Everyone will get to speak for as long as you need. Let's get these questions out of the way for the board first. Go ahead.
I got a question.
No. Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. Is that it? That's, that's it? So you're open from 8, 8 to 4, and that's it? How many days a week?
Six days a week.
How many dogs? Wait a minute, wait a minute. Everyone will get their chance. Slow down one second. Six, six days. So you're close. What day you're close? Sunday? All right. Sunday close.
Sunday close, thank you.
All right. Mr. Frankel, you had a question?
A couple. How many dogs? What's your maximum?
Um, well, the maximum hasn't been figured out yet because of the, we have to come up with a layout in the interior. Plus, we have, it, it's kind of driven by market demand. But I'd say you know, maybe 40 dogs would be a maximum that you could fit in the building with the, with the
All right, dogs, 40 dogs. Okay.
And is, is the person you're negotiating with, is this a known and existing Quincy operator? Or is this a new entity?
Well, it will be a new entity, but it's in conjunction with existing, an existing operator that doesn't have a physical location currently. So they've been doing this kind of as a kind of a mom and pop operation where it's operated, you know, through their personal cell phone. And they're actually doing pickup and then taking the dog out for a period of, you know, a block of time, say, two hours on a walk or whatever. And so this is like morphing the next phase of the business into being able to collect more dogs, have them all in one location, and then do the short walks from this location. But you have them there for the whole day. So you're getting, you know, the fee that's charged is for the whole day of, of boarding.
Would you care to share the name of who you're speaking with?
They're Seaside K9.
C with a letter or C like the S E N?
S E A, S I D E.
Seaside Kennel, is it called?
I know. Seaside K9.
K9, okay. Thanks. I mean, are, are you, what are you going to be doing for, I mean, I know every dog walker in town, but it's what are you going to do about noise in that building? You soundproofing it? How do you expect to handle that?
We will do some soundproofing in the building. The building itself is a block construction. So just construction alone is already somewhat soundproofed, but we'll be doing some wall material in order to limit the, you know, amount of noise that'll be coming out of the building. But we think even without doing that, the noise would be relatively minimal, just based on the construction of the building.
Okay, thank you.
Marty, may I?
Anyone else on the board?
Yeah, I have a question.
Mr. Hamill, Mr. Hamill, go ahead.
So do you have any designs on, on how many kennels are going to go inside? I mean, it's kind of nice to have a a plan of what the interior of the building is going to look like.
Yeah, so right now it's just open area, right? So we'll have, basically, there's a large breed is like a three by five space and a small breed is like a three by three. And they'll just be, you know, it's just a fence.
Three by five and three by three, can you bear?
Yeah, and it'll probably be like 50/50, small breed, large breed, you know, for starts. But it's just a fencing system that can be unbolted from the floor and we can change the configuration based on what kind of demand we wind up with from potential clients. So if everybody that wants to use the service has a large breed, then obviously we would have to do more of the larger breed pens. But the, the pen configuration, like I said, it's a movable system. So you it's a fence, it's like a fence with a gate and you bolt it to the floor and then, you know, it can be unbolted and moved around as needed in order to create the, the correct configuration.
Thank you. Is there drainage?
Mr. O'Brien, any questions?
Currently drainage in the building?
What do you mean drainage?
Well, a lot of these places, there's a main drain and that, that, you know, they, they, when they wash the building down after the dogs are gone.
Yeah, it's connected to the sewer. We'll be doing some plumbing work in order to provide, you know, in order to be able to do wash down and stuff, of course, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. O'Brien?
I, yeah, a question about removal and disposal of the waste. How frequently that occurs? And who does it?
Well, we contract out with a, with a waste management company. And then we would have, obviously, trash receptacles and then we would also have animal waste in a separate in a separate storage, you know, it wouldn't go into the same dumpster, obviously. And then we would we would have our, our waste management company take that as a separate removal. It would be like twice a week, probably.
Thank you.
Marty, one more, one more question, Marty.
Mr. Frankel, go ahead.
No, no grooming, no vet services, just strictly daycare?
No grooming and no, no vet services. I mean, if that, if we decided that we were looking to add something like that, we would come back and amend the permit, obviously. As of right now, no. I mean, it's, you have
It's not going to
It's a bit of a startup of a business, you know, so you know, I can't tell you a specific, you know, like how many large dogs or small, like, you know, that's going to happen when it happens, right?
So it seems like this So it seems like this is like, and if. Someone came to you with this thought and you, and you got this and you wanna run and see if you get the. Be okay first before you draw all these plans and get all this stuff, because I can see you don't have real answers for.
No, no, I have answers, it's just, you know, it, it, the use, it's the use that I'm looking to get approved, if we have the use approved.
Then you can go spend your money, I see what you're saying, that's why I'm asking, that's why I'm asking. Wanna spend all this money until you, right, right, okay, uh, is there gonna be any overnight boarding at all?
Currently, that's not the plan, again, if that changes, we would come back and ask for an amendment to the.
Alright, no overnight.
But right now, we're just looking for the six-day daytime operation.
Right, cuz that's what they kind of do right now, they just wanna expand their business too. Uh, so Brian, Franco, Mister Redell, did you have something?
I have no question.
Uh, Mister Chin?
I'm gonna reserve until after here from the neighbors and the councilors.
Okay, uh. Let's open this up to anyone that wants to speak in favor, anyone in favor, if you're not in favor, please don't speak. If you're in favor of this, please speak, anyone raise your hand. Wave to me if you're on video, something can happen. Star nine. Is there anyone there that wants to speak in favor, I don't see anybody.
No, there is.
Is that Kimberly? No, that's not Kimberly.
No, we're not in favor.
No, 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 I get it now, I just saw the, your hands up though. But you get your hand up to speak and so you're not in favor, it shouldn't be up, thank you. Uh, someone on the phone, are you in favor, could you unmute them, please? Thank you, see what happens. I got a phone number here, who is this?
Okay. Oh, hello.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, hold up, before you speak. Is this yours, like, the five O and ends in five O?
Correct.
You have to take an oath, uh, Mister Chin, could you please give her an oath before she speaks?
Only, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing?
Yes, I do.
Okay, you have the floor, ma'am, name and address for the record, please.
Um, Andrea Fonte. I'm four seventy-four, four seventy-four Beale Street.
Okay.
Um, I had raised my hand earlier, um, I'm not in favor.
Well, that's what this is for, if you're in favor.
I know, but I, 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 I have done it prior to you saying that.
Alright, no problem, you're just gonna have to wait, ma'am, until it.
That's fine.
Comes, okay, so hold on. Hold on, we'll put, yeah, we can mute you, we're all set, thank you very much. Uh, no one wants to speak in favor, any, uh. I got some letters here from the DTW on the correspondence. Date minus fifteen, twenty twenty-one, four ninety-seven Beale Street, case number Z B A twenty-five, we review the. Submittal in the government's project, uh, comments. Uh, we don't have any at this time, anything further, please advise. I have a letter here from the health department, Z B A case number twenty-one dash five, four ninety-seven Beale Street. Dear Chairman Akins and members of the board, our department has reviewed. Hold up, hold up, who's talking? Our department has reviewed. Our department has reviewed the March twenty-third, twenty twenty-one Z B A agenda. In offer comments we got in the following case, Z B A case number twenty-one dash five, four ninety-seven Beale Street, the application for approval of a kennel. Commercial per appendix A, table E and the zoning orders, the doggy daycare facility. The submittal indicated no detrimental effect on the neighborhood or the natural environment, however. Submittal lacked any details we got in noise control, barking, a policy of procedures for handling a pet wa-. Pet waste. Which could pose. As detriment to the neighborhood and environment, we would urge the board to require these items. To be satisfactory addressed prior to the Z B A of approval, respectfully Cynthia De Cristofaro, R S Chief.
Home in opposition.
I know, they might, they might be here, so let's see. Yeah, if, if you could just hold those until. Oh, case they speak. If they speak, I'm not gonna write or read a letter in. Alright, now we're to the opposed or undecided, anyone opposed or undecided? Uh, we're down to that first six one seven, citizens, what was that, where was she, right up top? No, left. Fifty, there you go. Emily?
Yes.
You're up.
Thank you.
You've been sworn in to test flight, so go ahead, you're up on it.
Thank you, I'm the owner at forty-seven Hilda Street, which is the next street over from Beale Street. I can see the, uh, four ninety-seven Beale Street from our backyard. Our concern with up to forty dogs is no matter how much you put in some sort of sound barrier. There is going to be barking, uh, Mister Gatnick even said they're going to be taking the dogs on walks around the community, which is gonna be barking. There's going to be at least twenty percent drop off, which is going to be barking. This is my private home, I use my backyard a lot, I work from home. The disturbance from not only the noise factor, but the additional traffic that will be caused by this facility when. Corner of Beale Street and Adam Street is also already extremely busy and over trafficked. We strongly, strongly object, thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you for hanging in and. Getting in this meeting, I know it ain't easy for some people to wait and wait, it's. Uh, saves you a trip to Quincy. There you go, is there anyone else, I guess the woman on the phone should be ready now, five O. She's on the right, all the way to the right. That's what I thought to it first, but, alright. You're up. It's Conthe?
Yes, Andrea Fonte, um, I guess I'm undecided. Um, I'm opposed, but I'm just, I'm more. I'm, I'm, I'm opposed, I guess, I think the barking issue that the previous woman brought up, as well as the number of dogs. And where would the parking be? Just in that parking lot, or do you?
No, what he said is he's cut, he's cutting that park and way down, but what he's gonna do is he's gonna, uh. Use some of it for, for grass for outside and some of it's gonna be used. For parking, for people to come in, short-term parking and drop off the dogs, twenty percent it could be drop off, eighty percent it gonna be pickup.
Okay, and I do think it's unrealistic that you'd have to go to a Rock or Andrews as far as a park area, open space. In that area, for walking, walking dogs, other than that, it's all residential. My comment.
Thank you very much for your time and thanks for hanging in, is there anyone opposed or undecided, we're up there, Nick? Yeah, Nick? You were speaking earlier, Nick, you're up.
My name's Nick Power with thirty-five Victory Ave.
Alright, hold on one minute, Mister Chin, if you could swear him in, please.
Yes, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing?
I do.
Uh, my only concern is that there's, there's a lot of kids on the street in the neighborhood, while we were sitting in the meeting, they were talking about. That'd be great, they could go pat the dogs down the street if they let them outside, and you know, so. Having my, a son who had a dog bite issue, he got bit by a dog that got loose with one of our neighbors. I, I'm kinda concerned, you're gonna put a fenced-in lot outside, there's breeds of dogs that could jump a five-foot fence, wha- what protections do I have them? They're not, that's not gonna happen here.
I hear you.
No.
We can make those.
You know, I don't, it really, there's really not a lot, there wasn't really a lot of information given by Mister Gatnick. It seems like he's just throwing this, throwing this against the wall to see if it sticks, and it just, to me, it doesn't, it doesn't, doesn't bode well when we have a neighborhood full of kids. And there's no real, there's no real securities to what, never mind the loudness of the dogs. Or the, or the smell of the dog poop outside on a barrel out back. Or that there's a restaurant operating out back there with the tent outside, but just, it's, I mean, my, my son, it was a dog bite victim, I don't want it to happen again. And if there's forty dogs with two people watching them down the end of the street, I see some, 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 some of that happening.
Alright, thank you, Mister Paul, for your time. Is there anyone else, opposed or undecided? John? You have to, you have to take an oath, John, you're not unmuted, let's unmute for us.
John McQ, twenty-one.
No, John McQ, we're on John McQ I'm talking, there you go, right there, John, uh. Mister Chin, if you could give him an oath, please?
Sure, uh, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
You're up, John.
Yes, I, I, the noise, I've got a, a few issues, the noise, uh, of all those dogs, the smell. Um, the waste issue, and also, we've had a problem with rats in our backyard before. Um, I'm kinda di- direct, uh, diagonally across from, uh, from where that will be. Oh, sorry about that. Uh, and that, tho- those are my concerns and, uh, I think they're real concerns, the, the rats were caused by, uh.
John, you gotta take care of that, is that yours?
Yep.
Leave it off the hook, thanks.
Sorry about that. Rats were caused by the dumpster from the restaurant up the end of the street. And I, I think, but, you know, feeding the dogs and, uh, and the, and the waste, I think that might become an issue again, that's a big problem.
Alright. Thank you, thank you. Uh, we're up there, John, uh. Oh, Kimberly already spoke, she gotta wait till you end, uh.
At the counselor here.
Is that John Rutherford, John Rutherford? John, you gotta take an oath.
I swear to tell the truth.
Well, it's up to him to give it first.
Mister Rutherford, do you, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing?
I do, thank you.
Alright, John.
John Rutherford, sixty-two Grimwall Road. Um, basically, one thing I wanna point out is when I was looking at the map of this. I'm gonna assume more than twenty percent of the people, I don't believe everything that I hear, are gonna be dropping people off in the morning. So if you take a right from, be, from Adam Street onto Beale Street. It's very quickly is the left there, and in the morning, those cars are totally backed up. So those cars will be backed up at the light, a car isn't even gonna be able to make a left. And now that's gonna back up traffic at the light, so that's gonna be a disaster there. And now let's talk about the poor dogs, the dogs need green space, people need green space, there's no green space there. I, I don't understand at all where they're gonna go to the bathroom and. They're gonna walk across the street, they're gonna get hit by cars, I don't want a dog getting hit by a car. Forty dogs in there, it sounds like a dog prison, I wouldn't want my dog in that dog prison with cages and stuff. I mean, please, I, I'll tell you what a good idea, my cat, Rasta, I love cats, is, um, you know, is sick. There's not many cat places, a cat hospital would be a good idea for that location, and I think you'd make more money. And cats make very quiet meows, I'm totally against this, it's a very bad idea.
John, is that a cage in the back I see?
I'm, I'm stuck in a cage, okay?
Thanks, John, appreciate it, you are funny tonight. Is there anyone else, opposed or undecided? Lisa?
Hi, I'm.
Three up there, there you go, Lisa, you gotta take an oath too, I'm sorry, Mister Chin?
Yes, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing?
Yes, I do. I am a resident on Victory Ave, um, and I. Agree with the other neighbors and what they've said, I am very concerned about, um, parking as well. The restaurant itself, they have two parking lots and our street is constantly riddled with cars. Um, we have nine small children on the street that feel as though they can run wild, unfortunately, because we're on a dead end. Um, until the restaurant came, they were very safe, it's no longer safe. Um, I am concerned about drop off and pickup, I also agree, unfortunately, the rat situation, um, in the neighborhood and the mouse situation. Is very extreme, um, we've invested a lot of money in dealing with it. Um, and I just can't imagine there would be enough parking, um, and also, I just can't imagine the waste sitting there. Um, and it not drawing more animals.
Thank you, Lisa, for your time, is there anyone else? I got two more here somewhere, I can't see them on my screen, it's up there. Who's that? Oh, Counselor Kane, hold on, Counselor Kane, yeah, uh.
Can you take Elise first, she's been waiting?
Elise, Elise first, then I'll take the counsel, okay, Elise? Yeah, I wanted to speak last anyway, if I can.
I need to take an oath?
Yes, Mister Chin?
Yes, I think she's on mute, is she not? Mister, Mister, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing?
I do.
Thank you.
You're up, Elise.
Hi, uh, my name is Elise McQ, I live at twenty-one Victory Avenue. My property practically backs on this address, hold on one minute, we've got two computers here.
Right, cuz I can see his books, right. What are we doing here? Alright, don't worry about them, yeah, Elise, Elise, you're up.
Sorry, um, so my, the, the property practically backs on my backyard and I'm very concerned about, um. About the feces, the contamination, the smell, um, that will come from there, um. The, uh, dogs need green space, I agree with that one hundred percent. Um, the, the traffic, the, um, the noise, and there's a, the restaurant, this property backs on the restaurant. And I'm afraid that the noise from the tent in the restaurants and the outdoor seating at the restaurant is going to get the dogs going. That they are going to interfere with each other, um, I agree one hundred percent with the rats, the city had to come and put traps in, on our property because of. Um, I'm worried about the smell, I am close enough that I will be able to smell whatever is left outside in the receptacle that's only picked up twice a week. Extremely worried about the odor from that and, and also just the, um, contamination.
Alright, thank you, Mister McQ, and Elise, do you wanna? No, there's, uh, Elise, there's another Elise I think wants to speak to.
It's my, it's my neighbor on my computer.
Okay, I just saying, there's, there's another Elise there that wants to speak, right there, there you go, if you could. Okay, Elise, can you hear me, is her name Elise, who is this?
One sec, one sec.
Is that your mama? Neighbor.
Hello?
Yeah, okay, Mister Chin, could you please swear in?
Yes, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing?
Yes.
Alright, you have the floor, ma'am.
Okay, my name is Kathleen Brody and I live at seventeen Victory Ave, Quincy, in my backyard. But the, um, the parking lot of, of, um. And I, I am. Very concerned about the noise from the dogs barking on a con- constant. Schedule, like, no, noise, noise, and. There are feces and whatever action goes on there.
Yes.
And, um, I have a, I have a big hole in the corner of my backyard from the rat situation. And that's enough to deal with, and I strongly oppose having a kennel put in.
Thank you, Miss Brody. Appreciate it, uh, Counselor Kane? Why, who? Oh, Kimberly, go ahead, second time, now, she's all set, Counselor Kane?
Thank you, Mister Chairman, uh, through you, um, I'm here in my capacity as the ward three city councillor, I'm here representing the neighbors and business owners of that area. Um, who are strongly opposed to this and therefore I am also strongly opposed. Um, uh, you know, first and foremost, I was blindsided by the proposal that came forward, I was not contacted by Mister Gatnick or. Uh, the seaside canine, so, uh, the first I heard about it was when neighbors and, uh, business owners from the area started. Uh, to call me about it, which I was very disappointed about, uh, but secondly, and more importantly, uh, this is a half-baked idea. Um, I am reading what is a brief summary of this concept, which reads very differently from some of the questions that were answered tonight. Um, I was of the understanding that this was not a drop-off pickup operation, but it sounds like we're not necessarily sure of that. Um, so generally, uh, being the fact that we don't have a clear understanding of what this business would be. And because of the sentiments of the neighbors, I strongly oppose this, uh, in solidarity with the neighborhood.
Thank you, Counselor, appreciate your time. Alright, uh, is that it? Second call, anyone wanna speak?
Uh, I need to just take an oath.
Who?
High vote. Is that correct?
Yeah, high vote.
All right, Mr. Vog, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing?
Where am I?
I do.
Oh, he's got his voice. I can't even, oh, okay. Go ahead.
I'm a resident of four ninety-one Beale Street, and I'm very concerned about the traffic and the waste, along with the noise. I'm right next to the building, and it's busy enough on the road as it is. I can only imagine how worse it would be.
Yep. Thank you very much for your time, and thank you for calling in. Uh, is there anyone else? Close them on the side of last call? Call that, uh, wait a minute, I got, I got two letters here I gotta put into, uh... There's one here that went to the counselor, Counselor Kane, uh... Brenton Kelly, she said that, uh, Samuel Samuel Perkins Building on Beale Street, "I am a dog lover, but I don't want that in our backyard." And I know the neighborhood feels strongly as well, so it's, she don't want it, her name and addresses on record. And I have another one here. Martin Battle, uh, on the thirteen Victory Street, won thirty years, and, uh... Goes on and on about, uh, doesn't want in his neighborhood, there's several issues, concerns of the property, the dog count, how many dogs, how, like, wasn't issued tonight exactly. We don't really know exactly what's going on. He's opposed, and the other ones that were spoke, so I'll have to write them in and read them in. But, uh, what I heard tonight, uh, at part of the hearing's closed, they missed it, sorry. Uh, not going back. It's time for the members here. We've heard plenty, not one person, I haven't heard one person in favor here. Looking at it, I, I, I feel like it's not a place for a dog count. It really isn't. And I feel bad for the owner. I know he wants to rent this place. I know, I know he's, it's COVID's killing businesses, and, and it's bogus and horrible, but I don't think the neighbors up there deserve a kennel or buy a restaurant or anything anyhow. So, I will be voting no on, on it. Uh, number one, I didn't hear enough, there wasn't enough planning, there wasn't enough quick... This is what we're going to do, this is, I don't, I don't think it was talked enough about. You know, I don't think the, that the, that the council wasn't even informed. You know, you open a business, you talk to your council, you try to get them on your side, you try to make this all work, that's what I want to do. Huh?
It says it written on the...
No, it is, it's on the application. Call a council and deal with them and tell them what's going on in this neighborhood to keep them up to snuff on everything. Exactly. A lot of people don't, and it, and it just makes everyone upset, which, you know, these are people that are trying to help you and get your businesses going, and they'll do anything. And if they know someone else is looking for a rental, they'd, they'd send them your way, say, "I know this nice little place you can open a business." So with all that, I just don't think that's a place for a dog daycare, and, uh, the in and outs, there's no place to go anywhere there. Everything will be in and out of a car, and I, I just couldn't, I couldn't do that. And the neighbors spoke loudly, so I'll be voting no. Uh, Mr. O'Brien, comments?
I agree that I, I'll be voting no on this issue, and the reason is, is I think that the, the ones that we've approved have been more in areas that are industrial, uh, fully commercial, not as adjacent to a, um, a, a single-family home neighborhood, along with the, uh, intersection traffic there at Beale Street, and, um, I, 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 again, I'd be, I'd, I'd be voting no on it.
Mr. Chin?
Right, um, just insufficient clarity and detail in the proposal. Um, the neighbors in our support, I, I don't, uh, believe this is the correct location for this type of business, so I'll be voting no.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Redell?
I think it's just a challenging location. I'm, I'm not in favor.
Mr. Hemel?
Even if I was in favor, this was such a hollow, uh, filing with nothing to it, I, I'd vote against it anyway, so I'll be voting against it.
All right. Thank you, guys. Could we have a motion to, uh, deny the application? Uh, wait a minute, maybe, maybe give the owner... Mr. Gatnick, do you, do you want to withdraw your application, or you want to vote it down?
Um, I mean, I might as well withdraw it. I mean, uh, it's obviously not going anywhere, so...
All right. Can I have a motion, please, Mr. O'Brien, and withdraw it without prejudice?
Mr. Chairman, regarding case number twenty-one dash five, I would like to make a motion to allow it to be withdrawn at this time.
No prejudice. Uh, second?
Second.
I need a, a voice, I mean, a, a, a roll call vote. Higgins lost.
Yeah, Russell Chen?
Yes.
Brian Redell?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
John Hemel?
Yes.
Art Naikens?
Yes.
That was backwards.
Yeah, I know. Sorry, Mr. Gatnick. Uh, all right, further on to tonight's agenda. Can we, uh, hold up one second here? Yeah, uh, Mr. Frankel's...
I thought he was on the last one because he's cut, but...
Well, I think, yeah, and I'm trying to think, and it, I'm trying to grab the, like, the four up top is what I grabbed, and then...
So before you start the case, we told me you're taking on it?
Yeah, it, uh, what we're doing now is, uh, Mr. Frankel's on this, Mr. Hemel's on. You're welcome. ZBA case twenty-one six, Paul Seberg for finding special permit to raise the existing single-family and construct a single-family house on address thirty-four Heat Street. Is the applicant a representative here?
Yes, uh, Paul Seberg from Grady Consulting, uh, representing Brian Seeland, the applicant.
You have the floor, sir.
Okay, um, currently, this site consists of existing single-family houses. Um, what the applicant would like to do is raise the existing house and construct a new single-family house. Um, the lot is non-conforming due to lot area and lot frontage. And the existing structure is non-conforming due to front and side setbacks. Um, the proposed structure will meet the criteria of section three point four point five, uh, for non-performing single-family houses. Um, we're requesting a special permit due to the fact that it's in a floodplain. So the proposed house will have the first floor elevated one foot above the base flood elevation, and also the foundation crawl space will have smart vent, uh, flood vents installed to offer relief through flowing the floodwaters. Uh, so I'd be happy to answer any questions the, the board may have.
Well, you, you're going on the same footprint, correct?
Uh, very similar to the same footprint. Um, we have a slight, slight bump out in the back.
Seven four seven four. Everything here says, the only difference is side right is point one foot difference.
Right, as far as the setbacks, correct. Yep.
Right, so it's the same footprint you're running, left and right?
Left and right, yep.
Then, all right, and, and how far back are you going in, uh... You're going seventeen feet further?
Uh, fifteen feet further back and twenty-eight feet wide.
All right.
But in compliance with the rear setback.
All right, and you got the dimensions of the home and the bedrooms and all that? How many bedrooms?
Yep, three-bedroom house.
Yep.
I believe we submitted four plans as well.
Yep, I got them here. Just the other guy proposing it, and, and what's the size of the, uh, house?
Um, the size of the house is, it's a two-and-a-half-story house.
No, 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 length and width.
Uh, length and width, it is, um... So basically, twenty-five feet by forty-one point four feet by thirty-seven point four feet by twenty-eight feet by thirteen feet, then by sixteen.
So what's the height on this?
The height is...
Thirty-seven?
Thirty-three point six, thirty-three point six.
And what size stories is it? What size is these stories? Because I see you got a smaller... You're going back fifteen, sixteen extra feet, all right?
Yep.
Same driveway staying?
Yeah, pretty similar to the same driveway, uh, slightly increased in pavement, ninety, ninety-two square feet.
Yep.
But we are proposing a condition with the, uh, conservation. They requested that we do a dry well, so that would offset the impervious coverage.
What, what, how'd we get to thirty-four, thirty-four feet? What, what's the height of the, of these stories?
So from average grade, let me read the definition here.
No, just, I mean, you got twelve-foot ceilings, ten-foot ceilings, eight-foot ceilings, where do we have the ceiling? Just each floor, what's the height of the ceiling?
Just give me a minute, I just had to pull up the plan here, just so I can get, take my PDF, it's taking a little while.
Oh, I got you.
There should be eight, eight-feet ceilings, I'm pretty sure, but...
So you got eight-foot ceilings, we're talking sixteen plus a roof plus the first floor. Why, how do you get to thirty-seven? I just wanted to know what kind of roof you have.
That's what, Marty, it, I, I was, my question, I, I think it's, is it because of the base elevation here?
I get that because of that, I get that, but it's, but it's, it's the crawl space he's saying when he said earlier. That's why I'm, I changed my thought of theory here, that what am I, what am I missing here that makes a thirty-three-feet hall? He's only got a crawl space underneath.
So it's, um, basically, the first floor elevation's at elevation, uh, thirteen. You've got an average grade around the house, roughly elevation nine, so about three feet off the ground for the first floor. Um, the second floor is, so, so the second floor is elevation twenty-three, so it's about, it's ten feet from the fir-, first floor to the second floor elevation, so it's probably a nine-foot ceiling on the first floor.
Well, it's ten feet to the base, it'd be ten feet, wouldn't it?
Oh, the floor joists, ceiling.
Floor joists, you got about twelve foot floor joists.
Up to the top, the floor joists, oh, you're saying a one foot, eight inches or whatever, ten, all right.
Yeah, approximately.
Nine and a half feet, all right, so what's the next, next floor?
The, the second floor's at twenty, elevation twenty-three, and, uh, the attic first, the attic floor elevation would be thirty-two.
So you got thirteen feet in the second floor?
Uh, because it's a...
Thirty, thirty-two minus twenty-three, so that's nine feet minus one foot floor joists, so it's about an eight-foot ceiling.
I'm missing something here. You had twenty, you had three foot, and then you had, you had, you had twenty-three, thirteen, twelve. One foot, one foot, all right, one foot. All right, I'm all set.
Marty, can I, can I have my question on that, though? Like, their, their height, you're saying that the, the base of your attic is starting at thirty-two feet out, so you, you only have a one-foot attic? That's not what you're hearing, no?
No, no, it, it's based on the datum, the elevations, so existing grades ten, so ten.
Saying, how big is this?
Yeah, I know, so what is your, what is your height at the roof?
I know, but you got a thirty-four-foot house, and he's got a small crawl space. Yeah, so it's thirty-four feet tall. That's a big freaking house. And he owns it on a, a two-foot, three-foot off the ground, first floor. Didn't know you could hear me, buddy, sorry about that. I said freaking, I said freaking.
So can you, can you tell me what the, the, the height from street level is? That's what I was trying to understand. I was trying to understand, I understand you got the, you got the base flat elevation.
So, right, right.
Is that, is street-level height, like, actually, like, forty-two here?
No, 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 no. So, so street, you, you, I think you're confusing the, uh, the elevations of the, on the, uh, elevation drawings. They're basically related to the datum that, that the, the site's on, so the existing grade's ten. The attic space is at elevation thirty-four, so that's twenty-two feet. Okay.
Ten-foot ceiling. All right, Charlie, anything?
Uh, no, I'm good right now, thank you.
Mr. Chin?
I'm still a little bit confused on the height, the, the ultimate height of the roof. Because it looks like it's a lot taller than what you're, what you're seeing on these plans. I mean, the, the, the numbers don't match up with the drawing.
I'm saying, thirty-three feet off the ground, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Thirty-three feet, thirty-three point six feet from the average grade.
From the average grade in that property, right, so it's thirty, you got roughly a thirty-four-foot house, Mr. Chin, is what he's saying, and that's what we're putting in the paperwork here.
So that, that game of front, there was only two feet tall from the top of the, the ceiling?
No, so you have to understand that we, it's in relation to the datum, so the ground elevation's at nine point eight, and you're looking at the thirty-two of the, of the attic, the first, the floor of the attic is elevation thirty-two, so it's thirty-two minus nine point eight.
Elevation thirty-two, not, not thirty-two.
Right, elevation thirty-two, not thirty-two feet tall.
All right, I follow you.
Right, right.
We've heard this twice a month, we're not very bright over here, apparently.
I don't put our members together in our brain, it just didn't seem to work right in my head, I'm going, I'm missing something. Anything else? Mr. Frankel? No, I have no questions. All right. I guess that's it. One, two, three, four, five, all right. Thank you. Is there anyone that wants to speak? Mr., you have something, Mr. O'Brien?
No, I'm good now. Thank you.
Whoa, 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 sorry. Uh, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor? In favor? First call? Fine, you got to have friends. Who? Second call? Oh, I thought you stacked the meat. Guess you didn't. Third call. Call that part of the hearing closed. Any correspondence? Correspondence, I got a letter here, correspondence in the DPW, March twelve, twenty twenty-one, thirty-four. Case number ZBA twenty-one six, we have reviewed the above referenced project. Our comments are as follows. One, will there be any change in the grade due to the development? Private approval is applied to any fill proposed on a flood zone property. Two, upon completion of the project as go planned, showing it, all utilities, building footprints need to be submitted along with a digital file. An elevation certificate should also be submitted if the property is in the flood zone. If anything's further, please advise. Call that part of the hearing closed. Anyone opposed or undecided? First call, uh, Citizen Rutherford, you're up. John, you've been sworn in, go ahead.
I swear to tell the truth again.
You already did, brother.
Thank you, John Rutherford. Um, my question was, um, you know, like, when you put on advertising in the paper, you, I really have no idea. I didn't see the plans. How many square feet is the total house? Because that's what's going to get recorded in the assessor's page. So what's the new square footage of this house?
The, 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 the footprint of the house is one thousand five hundred and seventeen square feet.
Well, I'm talking about what's the total square footage of the entire house when you're going to be complete, all, all living space?
Um, I don't have that exact calculation off the top of my head. I'd have to actually calculate it.
John, double it, and that's about what you got?
Yeah, approximately.
And so how many bedrooms and how many bathrooms?
Three bedrooms and I believe two bathrooms.
And how many parking spaces?
Um, approximately two parking spaces in the driveway, and it's a two-car garage, so they'd have two parking spaces within the garage.
Four, is at least four there, you know?
Oh, well, I'm just saying, there's tiny, you know, I just looked at all the houses on that street, and that is on them, and it's a residential egg, and I just want to make sure they're not building, you know, a quasi sort of two-family that, you know, and could be a two-family, you know? It's a house, so, but anyway, um, I'm, I'm neutral on this, I'm not against it. Um, I'm, you know, everyone pays so much in taxes, you should be able to develop your property, so I am a believer that, you know, to let people do what they want, so none of the neighbors complain, um, you know, I'm neutral, I'd let it go. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Is there anyone else posed or undecided? Second call? Joanne? Uh, we need you to take, we need you to take an oath, uh, Mr. Chin, if you could, please.
Or, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing?
I do.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tom Dalabon, twenty-one Deerfield Street, I'm the next street in. And my, my question is, do you plan to live there, or is this house for development for sale?
So I'm representing the applicant, who's Brian Seeland. I work for the engineering firm, uh, representing him. Um, I believe he plans to live here. He's actually just had his first kid, he's in the hospital right now, so, uh, he's intending to move in there with his family.
He, he's a residential developer, though. This house is for him personally?
Yeah, he works for, uh, Seeland, uh, he, yeah, he's, he works in Pembroke, um, but I believe this house is for him personally.
You're not sure?
You're not sure?
I'm not entirely sure, not, nope.
And it's going, the house is going to go back seventeen feet? That's what it said?
Fifteen?
Uh, fifteen feet.
Fifteen feet from the present foundation, in, in a square, like, from the sides?
No, it's going back fifteen feet to the front.
The whole, the sides, the whole... The whole, the sides, the whole, like evenly?
From the existing, it's coming to the addition is fifteen feet, and is that a two-story addition? And is it the full width of the house?
Yes, that's a two-story, two-story increase, um, in the back, I would say it's probably more like seventeen to eighteen feet, a little bit further off the existing house than, um.
Is it the full width? Is it the full width of the house, or is it an L?
It's an L shape, so it'd be twenty-eight, twenty-eight feet versus forty-one feet. You wanna go up?
No.
Okay, that's all we have, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, is there anyone else opposed or undecided? Third call? Anyone opposed or undecided? Third call? Call that. Call that part of the hearing closed. Uh, comments? You know, they're building a house, and it's gonna be a single family, and. No, it's, uh, no, they're going through the same footprint on each sideline that was there. So I'll be voting in favor of that. Mr. O'Brien?
Uh, likewise, uh, where it's a single family, um, small expansion out back, I think, not the full length of the house, uh, I'll be voting in favor.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Raydell?
Just to be clear, it's just for a special permit in the flood plain, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so there's no variance there, I mean, dimensionally, there's no variance, I'm, I'm in favor.
No, he is in the same, same footprint that was there, right, on the sides, so they don't need it, right, uh, Mr. Chin?
Yes, I'm in favor.
And, Mr. Frankel?
I'm in favor as well.
Have a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, regarding case number twenty-one dash sixteen, Paul Seberg, for a finding and a special permit flood plain to raise the existing single family home and construct a new single family home on the premises number thirty-four H Street. I make a motion to grant the requested special permit and finding.
Second.
Seconded, on the motion, stand by. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call vote?
Yes, Russell Chin?
I just want to clarify, that's, um, that's case number twenty-one dash six, correct?
Correct.
I'm in favor.
Brian Radel?
I'm in favor.
Charlie O'Brien?
Uh, yes.
Jeff Frankel?
In favor.
Martin Nagan?
Yes. Further on to tonight's agenda, ZBA twenty-one eight, Triple Five Motors Inc. First of all, I'm gonna beep this name up, I apologize. The Vitacan Treasurer, for a special permit for a motor vehicle general repair on the premises number one sixty-six Washington Street. The application, the applicant or his representative here. Chris?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, uh, thank you.
Attorney Harrington, real quick, Marty, I'm gonna step away if you got everybody else, alright, appreciate your time, guys, thanks.
Thanks.
There, Brian.
Yeah, Himmel's in, and, uh, Frankel's in.
Yep.
You're up, uh, Mr. Harrington?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, you did a pretty good job pronouncing the last name, it's, uh, Viva Chiken. You were pretty close. He is, uh, he is on, on the call with us, is, uh, obviously the Triple Five Motors, uh, sign down below is, is my client. Uh, Bert, he's the treasurer and one of the principal partners in this business. Uh, this is a, an application for a special permit to, uh, perform motor vehicle general repairs at this property at one sixty-six Washington Street. Uh, this is a business B zoning district, and, uh, special permit is required for motor vehicle general repair, uh, in this district. So what we've, um, Triple Five Motors currently operates, uh, right next to the Dunkin' Donuts on Southern Ottery. They've, uh, been there since two thousand thirteen. And as to the best of my knowledge from everyone I've spoken to, uh, they're a very well managed and successful, uh, local business. Uh, they want to expand, and they want to open a second location, so they're planning on keeping their shop on the Southern Ottery, right across the street from Quark Ford, and having a second location on Washington Street. Um, as I, as I stated, the, uh, the property they want to go to is one sixty-six Washington Street. That was, uh, the location of Safe Light Glass for many years, probably familiar with it.
Yep.
Um, this property, when we first started looking at this property, we were under the impression uh, that the property was already a motor vehicle use, and that we, we didn't need a special permit in order for them to rent this property. Um, Mr. Duke, uh, uh, did not agree with that and felt that we did need the special permit, so we're, we're here applying for that. Um, this property has had a motor vehicle use for about thirty years, beginning in nineteen ninety. It was, uh, Granite Auto Sales, and so there was auto sales and auto repair going on in this property. And from two thousand and five, Safe Light, Safe Light Auto Glass was there, uh, doing windshield repairs. So there have been motor vehicle uses on the property. We believe this application complies with, with all the requirements in section nine point four to issue a special permit. Um, I submitted a memo, uh, to you with the package, with the application, uh, going through the community needs, uh, the traffic, the utilities, um, as well as the, uh, the nature of the, the neighborhood where it's located, and the, uh, fiscal impacts that it will have on the city. Uh, going through each one of those items, and, um, uh, just pointing out, in, in our opinion, it meets all the requirements for, for a special permit. If you, um, look in your application, you'll notice that we included, um, dimensional table doesn't say much because the building's not changing, so the existing conditions and proposed conditions are exactly the same, uh, no matter what. Uh, we also included, um, a parking layout for the property, and some photographs of the property. Uh, this parking layout was the plan that was filed, um, thirty years ago by Granite Auto Sales. It just, it simply shows that there are eighteen parking spaces, um, in front of this building, uh, that can be used, uh, for the customers and the employees of this shop. We also submitted some photographs of the property, so you can see what it looks like if you're not familiar with it. Um, we expect this operation to be really exactly the same as it is, um, on the Southern Ottery. Uh, there are hours on the Southern Ottery at eight AM to six PM, Monday through Friday. Um, when they're open on Saturdays, they're open lesser hours, they're open from nine to four on a Saturday. At this particular location, when they first open, uh, they expect they'll be open Monday through Friday, and then only opening for the Saturday hours when the shop gets busy enough to warrant that. Uh, there are gonna be three employees there. There are four service bays inside the building, and as I said, the eighteen parking spaces outside. Uh, they plan to completely paint the exterior of the building as soon as they sign the lease. Uh, and they're gonna change the outside of the building to the, uh, to the colors that they use for their, for their triple five signage and the triple five logo. Uh, so the interior and exterior of the building are gonna be completely, uh, painted and spruced up, uh, with new signage and all new equipment inside the building. Uh, also, this building is equipped with, um, uh, the proper floor drains for motor vehicle service use. Uh, the floor drain, the slab floor inside the building pitches toward the back of the building, so the water, oil, gasoline, anything like that will not roll out the front door. It pitches toward the back, and it's picked up by a, a, a floor drain with the proper oil and gas separators, uh, before, you know, anything goes into the city system. So the building is, um, is really already set up for this kind of use.
Yep.
The, the operators, uh, know what they're doing, they're experienced. They know how to, um, store and just properly dispose of hazardous materials, they're doing it now on Southern Ottery. Uh, and we expect, uh, this operation will be exactly like the Ottery. Uh, at the Southern Ottery, they have a, uh, they have a repair license, uh, and a, and a license to sell a, a few used cars. And so when we go to the license board, uh, we'll be asking for the exact same licenses at this location that they have at the Southern Ottery. And, uh, as I said, my client, uh, Bert, is, is on the call with us. He's the Triple Five Motors sign, if you have any questions for me or him, we're happy to answer them. Thank you.
Counselor, uh, on that parking layout, is the building to the right when you pull in have any right to those spaces?
No.
Not?
No.
Okay, alright. I just, I just thought when I was up there looking, I, I, if I'm saying, looks like this is almost gonna be some of theirs and some of theirs, so I didn't know, alright. Uh, I, I know my only worry about Washington Street is having old used cars that are hanging around and been there for a long time, but I know that business down there, that they move stuff and they keep it clean, and they run a good business uh, down there, because I look at it every time I pull in back at Donut's, I kinda look around this place there, how they doing over there? Seems like he always does keep it nice in the place, so.
Triple, Triple Five Motors specializes in, uh, BMW and Mercedes.
Yeah.
And, um, so.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm quite confident they're not gonna have, uh, any old beaters.
All ATs in you.
Sitting on their property for sale on Washington Street.
Yeah, you won't see me up there, I, I don't buy those now. Uh, uh, it's not the money, it's just I like American cars, anyway. Anyway, a little, little pop out for American cars, it's okay to buy an American car, guys. Counselor, how you doing? Do you wanna speak up while you're here, I know you've been, uh, online here?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, yep, I'll, I'll, I don't know who's on, on the line here from the neighborhood, I have not heard from anybody on Glen Terrace or Elm Street, which surprises me, it actually shocks me. Um, but, um, couple of questions to Mr. Harrington, if I could. Chris, did you say what the amount of cars are they're gonna have stored in that parking lot, I mean, you got, I saw eighteen spaces, is that the amount that will be there?
Uh, yeah, it wa- it won't be more than eighteen, uh, that, that's the maximum capacity for that lot.
What's the maximum that, and I know I have the Triple Five guy on the, uh, on the line here, uh, what's the maximum capacity down at the, the other location next to Dunkin' Donuts?
Yeah, Bert, could you unmute yourself and, um?
Yeah.
You're looking for the capa- the, the number of licensed cars at, at fifty-five, at five-five-five Southern Ottery?
Just curious.
Um, it's, it's about, um, twelve cars.
Okay, um, thank you. Uh, my only concern, and, and again, I think I'll comment, I'll come back, Mr. Chairman, if there's folks on here who bring this up, is, um, noise and sound issues. It won't be a car dealership, it'll be a car repair place, um, they back right up to Glen Terrace.
Yep.
Uh, you know, so I don't know, um, if they're gonna put, and maybe, uh, Chris, you can elaborate on this, will they put like, uh, they're gonna have, they're gonna put lifts in there to lift the cars up like a regular garage?
Yes, there, there will be lifts inside. Um, the build, the building is very close to the property line on the sides as well as the back. So there, there won't be any activity, uh, on the sides of the building or behind it, all the, any activity will be out front on the Washington Street side. Um, so we're not planning on having doors or windows open or anything like that to
Gotcha.
Allow, allow noise into the, into the residential neighborhood behind us.
So you're gonna say, oh, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
What's that building that, that the chairman spoke about that's right to the right of it? Who's in that building?
Uh, I think it's some kind of a union hall.
Yeah, it's kinda where. Yeah, tunnel workers eighty-eight.
Okay. No, I'll get off and, and see if there's folks on here, but my biggest thing was the sound with Glen Terrace, and anything we can do, fencing, sound barriers, whatever we do out back just to give them privacy from anything that might come their way in regards to a little bit more activity as a car repair rather than a car dealership, so I'll sign off, Marty, and I'll swing back if I have to.
Alright, Counselor, uh, Mr. Harrington, just, just as far as like work, all the ma- any major repairs gonna be done inside the building, they're not gonna be using air guns and all that stuff out in the parking lot, correct?
No.
No, so alright, we can put it in there, any repairs will be done inside, also transmissions, tires, you know, used stuff, where are they gonna be stored? People get new transmission, they throw one in the corner, throw in the corner, and then all of a sudden it's five in the corner outside, then it's seven, then it's twelve, then it's fourteen tires. Is everything gonna be kept in the building, not outside?
A- a- anything that is outside will be put outside for pickup by a, by a junk dealer or, or recycler. Uh, if you've, uh, if you're familiar with the operation next to, next to Dunkin' Donuts, um, they don't, they don't store car parts outside in the open. They keep things, uh, either in dumpsters or behind fences, and they're really good about, uh, not allowing stuff like that to accumulate on the property.
Yeah, and it's a little different up there than Southern Ottery, because as everyone's going in the Dunkin' Donuts all the time, and it's right there, and everyone's looking at you, but, and that's a little different where the building's set way back, I'm just trying to make sure there ain't gonna be nothing tires left outside or anything, and then you say, well, I only got six tires, so I can't call nobody, I need forty tires, or I only got two transmissions, I hope that stuff can all be in the front of dumpster and kept off, off the lot, alright?
Yes, uh, uh, Bert, if you could unmute yourself, if you want, wanna just tell them, uh, what you do, uh, down at Southern Ottery with, um, as far as keeping tires and, and car parts and things like that out of sight.
Okay, so we have a little storage to the left of the building that we put all our scrap them. So it's all enclosed, and then once, and then once a week, they come and pick it up. Um, there's those scrap guys, um, that comes at once a week to pick up the motors, um, they saws all the metal parts.
Alright.
But Bert, you store, you store it behind a fence, right, so it's not out in the open?
It's in a, um, it's in a little, um, storage, um, shed outside, right outside, just a small one.
So all the tires, everything goes in there?
Uh, we don't have tie, tires at the shop right now, um, we sub, we sublet them out, so we don't have any tire issues. But we're gonna be doing tires at the new lo- location, so
Yeah.
we'll have, um, proper storage for it.
Alright, just as long as it's keeping out of the parking lot, every people driving by all the time, you just, yeah, do something, fence it in or something we gotta do. Uh, those are the things that I had for questions, Mr. O'Brien, anything?
I know, I'm good at this point, thank you.
Alright, uh, Mr. Chin?
Yeah, I was, I was thinking fencing too, it's, it's come up, uh, the council mentioned fencing, uh, Marty, you mentioned fencing. It's quite visible from the street and quite visible from the apartment buildings around the area, as well as that, um, the large white building next door, it's a church or but, um, just curious to know whether fencing would, uh, would help with the aesthetics, and also with the security, keeping the vehicles secure at night.
Yeah, I don't know, that's, uh, Mr. Harrington, any, any thought on that?
I managed to, uh, I was looking at a, a photograph of the site, and I managed to, uh, click you guys away and couldn't find you. Um. We could definitely have, um, to the left and right of the building, we can definitely have, uh, a piece of fencing, so that, uh, anything that's next to the building isn't visible from the street. Uh, also, there'll be a, uh, a dumpster close to the building, probably on the left-hand side. That will have the, that will have the proper dumpster enclosure around it, according to, per the city ordinance.
Yep.
Uh, and then also, uh, a shed building to put stuff in so that nobody sees it. If, um, uh, we're not, we're not intending to use the area to the sides of the building or behind it, uh, because the building is frankly quite close to the property line on the sides and the back, so there really is, isn't any room back there.
Right.
Um, but, um, so we're not planning on storing car parts back there. But, uh, yeah, if, if, if one of the neighbors, you know, wanted a privacy fence like a, a, you know, a stockade seat of fence or something like that, um, we'd certainly be happy to do that. And I don't think there's fence there now.
Yeah, my, my thought was fencing where the cars are gonna be parked, not, not where the building is.
Um, oh, it's like on the le- on the left-hand side where the church is on the left-hand side?
Yeah, we, we, we are possibly even facing Washington Street if, unless that's, you know, I don't know whether you're gonna secure those kind of, how are you gonna secure them in there without, without a fence? Mercedes and BMWs can be, you know, attractive.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we could do a fence on the side between the church and our, our parking lot, so that, so that, uh, from the church side, they're not actually just. they're not actually just looking at the cars. They'll just maybe see the roofs of the cars.
Sure. Just a thought.
Oh, yeah, something to divide that level would be nice, right? Uh, Mr. Frankel?
No, I have nothing at this time.
Alright, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in favor? Raise your hand. Give me a shout out. Star nine. It's Citizen Rotifeld. Get your name up. You're up.
John Rotifeld sixty-two, Grumwall wrote, "One quick question I had was that, is it a seven-day-a-week operation and what are the hours?"
Sat, Monday through Friday, eight to six. Saturday, if needed, nine to four.
Okay, well, that's in line with Jiffy Lube and that's in line with Pep Boys, so I mean, I, the last thing on Washington Street I remember is the methadone clinic. So compared to the methadone clinic, I think this is a wonderful idea. So I support this. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Alright, anyone else opposed? Anyone opposed? First call, second call? Anyone else want to speak? Opposed or undecided? Like no one's, no one's even here on the left? Call up, anyone else in favor here? That's where I'm at, isn't it? Yeah, alright. Call up, pile the hearing closed. I got a letter here from the DBW one six six Washington Street, case number GBA twenty-one eight, where you'd be above the project. Our comments are, no comments. I have no comments. Anything further, please advise. Anyone else opposed or undecided? Last call? Opposed or undecided? Triple five modus, you don't want to speak? Second call, third call. Call up, pile the hearing closed. I'm going to vote in favor. I think it's, it's nice to see a business expand. That means they're doing very well. Glad to hear that, huh? Alright, turn it back on. Give them, last two numbers, eight-five, let them speak. Name, name and address, please? Can you hear me?
Yes, hello, sorry, I was trying to buzz in, but I couldn't.
Right, name and address?
It's Jeff Hines, one ninety-seven Elm Street.
Alright, Jeff. Mr. Chin, could you please swear him in?
Mr. Hines, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the man I am hearing.
I do.
Mr. Hines, you have the floor.
Um, just a couple of concerns. I think they run a pretty good shop down on Southern Ottery, but like Counselor McCarthy said, the noise. Uh, we're a very tight neighborhood right there. And, I mean, Midas was good neighbors, but we were glad to see them go on Southern Ottery, because when they have the air guns going and everything, they have, in the summertime, the garage doors are going to be open, I would say. And so noise just goes everywhere. And I'm wondering, are they planning on opening the windows on the sides of the building or the back of the building back up?
No, we're not, we're not planning on opening doors or windows on the back of the building for exactly that reason to you know, to try to prevent noise from going behind the building into the neighborhood. So they'll be, you know, they'll have the, on a hot day in the summer, they'll have the overhead door, I'm sure, open in the front to, you know, get fresh air in the building. But no, we're not, we're not planning on opening doors and windows on the back for exactly that reason.
Yeah, and I understand they're trying to run a business too, but with the doors open in the summer, I mean, I mean, Midas, it was just, the noise was terrible all the time and yellow, yellow cabs and so just the way, and I understand they got a business to run. This is the problem when you have residential in with, you know, commercial. But I don't know if there's something we can do there. And the other concern I have is, I believe, did they say eighteen cars?
If eighteen lot, eighteen in their lot, yes, eighteen spaces.
And how many, how many cars would they be going for for the used car lot? I'm not against used cars, but I'm just curious to see how much.
They can't, they can't fill their lot, so if they're using six or seven for, for business, they'd be using so many. They can only use what they have space for. They can't be leaving cars everywhere.
Yeah, because we don't, and other businesses in the area, all of a sudden, cars are spilling out on, they used to just store cars on Elm Street for other, you know, for the garage. And that, that's, that's a problem. And then the other problem, and that was happening regularly in the city. I don't know, they, I don't know, it was allowed to go on. But I'm sorry. Okay, and the, the other, the other concern is with, the reason I say about how many cars, if, and I don't have a problem with being a used car lot, but are they aware, is the church using that now, like on Sundays and the union hall? Do they use that? I mean, I think there was, I think that in the past has been a thing where people work together as neighbors and using each other's lot somewhat, but I don't know if that's going to be the case now, or is that, or do they know, or you know, like this mass on Sunday?
Well, it's recent, and I don't know how they've worked that out, yeah.
Sure, no, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying that is the case now. I mean, it depends, but because the reason I say it like with the church, if they can't park, I know they use other lots around it. If they can't park on those lots, that pushes more cars out onto the streets.
Right.
And I know right now, they, well, they had been using other lots on, you know, but it just, I don't even know if it's just kind of an unwritten thing, you know what I'm saying? But it's, it's a concern. It depended on how many cars they were planning on putting in there. And I'm glad to see the hours, because one of the other operators in the neighborhood would be, have the garage doors open at ten or eleven o'clock at night with the old air guns going.
That's crazy, yeah.
So that's just, just the concerns, but I think, I think he does run a, from what I see of the operation down in Southern Ottery, he does seem to run a good operation. But the main thing I think is, is the noise and the hours of operation.
Yeah, well, they cut them down, eight to six and nine to four.
Okay, and as far as, as far as the summer, I mean, are they, are they going to have air conditioning in the garage or are the doors going to reopen?
I have no idea. Are they going to probably open the front doors? Probably will, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I understand.
Most businesses would. I know they would. I, you know, I would, I don't know, I don't know.
No, I, I understand. I understand what you're saying. And they're in business too. But we want to, we want to guarantee, we want to guarantee as a neighborhood that like, you know, they, they won't be going like after six o'clock at night with the noise or whatever.
Well, that's what they're asking for right now. And they're going to be going in front of a license board and they're going to be asking for hours of operation too. And they're going to have, you know, whatever we decide here will be in there too. So Mr. Duke is sitting right here, the commissioner. So he knows a licensing board, so I think if they ask for something different, he's going to speak up and say, that's not what you said last week. You know?
Okay, I appreciate that. But if, so if they did open until nine as a car lot, which I could see happening, but they wouldn't be doing repairs until nine, is that the way we're taking it?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Yeah, that could be, that could be up to the licensing board too, what hours they're giving to do that. But the repairs, they're asking us for, for special permit and, and they're saying for the business, the hours are eight to six and then Saturday, maybe nine to four. If they're open.
That's fine, that's fine. I just want to make sure if they're open until nine at night, but for sales, that they're not, that they're not working with the cars until nine at night, that's all.
Harrington, do you have anything in that? Maybe, maybe the owner could speak up on that. What does he do down the other place?
Yeah, well, I'm actually, I'm actually one of his customers at the other place, so I know that, I know they close at six o'clock because I've had to pick up my own car.
You're one of the guys that can afford the beamers and those, is that?
I know this is being recorded, so just so I can, just so I can defend myself. One of my clients who has a used car place up on Center Street called me one day and said, you know, I've got this really nice BMW. It's twelve years old, okay, twelve years old. It's a beautiful condition and I think you should buy it from me, and I did. And so I brought it to my regular mechanic, this guy Rich Rialini, who's a great mechanic.
Don't work on it.
Rich said to me, you know, if you need any significant work on this car, you got to take it to these guys at triple five, because that's where I send all of my BMW and Mercedes, because they're hard to work on and these guys know what they're doing.
Different tools.
So that's how I wound up with these guys. In terms of the questions from Mr. Hines about the hours and the number of cars, assuming we're successful tonight, I hope that we are, but we expect to be at the license board in two weeks. And we know the license board will, they're going to chime in on, on hours of operation and the number of cars. So if we ask, if we ask for used cars, say we ask for four or five used cars, you know, they're going to subtract four or five from the number of, of cars they'll approve for the repair license. Because they're only going to approve a total number that the property will accommodate, so. And we expect that the license board is going to give us a number that works for the number of parking spaces we have in the size of the lot. And they'll also look at our hours.
Okay, I'm fine with that. And as long as, as long as this place is for the customers to park, I wish them well with their endeavor. And I mean, we support businesses. We just want something that works for everyone.
Thank you very much for your call.
Thank you, thank you.
Is there anyone else? I'm going to call up, pile the hearing closed. I'll be voting in favor, and I know what they've done down there, and they got a real small lot down there and they try to make it work when sometimes they have more cars they're selling than not. And they said, I don't know where they put them, but they kind of keep that lot working and not overflowing and not jam-packed, so I like the way they run their business. By the way, my daughter had a Jeep. It's got a Mercedes engine in it, and the only one that works on it is Mercedes dealers.
Bring it down.
I never knew that until I went to get it fixed, and he goes, I don't work on those. I go, what are you talking about? It's a Mercedes engine. I go, I wouldn't have bought this thing. Oh my God. So it's not eighty-five an hour, it's one sixty-five an hour. Those guys big bucks. Anyway, I'll be voting in favor. Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, likewise.
Mr. Chin?
Yeah, I'm in favor. I, I do want the applicant and the city to consider the fencing issue that I brought up earlier.
So you want, you want a stockade fence on that side of the property?
I'd like it on the church side. I think that would be good for the neighborhood.
Alright.
And also help the security of the cars.
May I ask what I'm?
What are you talking, like a six-foot stockade fence?
It doesn't matter to me. It's just something that, you know, I think would, would help the church a little bit in terms of visibility and walk on Washington Street too.
Really? But I just think if it's cedar and it looks like clean, nice, so you don't see them. I'm just trying to keep, if you put chain link, what are you talking, plastic maybe? Oh, slat wood fence? Oh, alright, slat wood fence, okay. A slat wood, a woody slat fence we're talking about. Right, Mr. Chin?
Yes, that's.
A plastic, you want plastic? I mean, wood's not.
I just don't want chain link. I don't think that would really help the situation.
Correct, right.
Right.
Okay, so it's non-seethrough fence. Okay. And Mr. Duke will take a look at it. Mr. Harrington, you can come up with something. We'll put that in there with that.
You want that in the condition, right?
Yeah, condition, Madam Court. Yes. Can I have a motion, Mr. O'Brien, please?
Yes.
I did talk to you, Mr. Hemmelf, did I?
No.
No. Or me.
Or Mr. Frankel.
Oh, or Mr. Frankel. Alright, I'm getting, I don't know. I thought I did that already.
They have reasonable hours. The fence is a great idea, and these guys run a good business, so I, I think it'll be a good fit under the parameters we've talked about. I'll be voting in favor.
Mr. Frankel?
Mr. Chairman, could I jump in before you start?
Yeah, I will. One sec. Go ahead, Mr. Frankel. I agree. They run a good, respectable and conscientious, conscientious business at their other location. Reward that. Alright, Mr. McCarthy, my counselor, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I agree with Mr. Chin. It'd be nice to give the church a little deflection of the cars. And my concern, again, I'd also like as a condition that they take a hard look at doing something to put a barrier up if they have the room and it's, it's doable in the back to protect those houses on Glen Terrace.
Okay, so you're looking for a fence to continue over there?
Yeah, those houses are probably, and I, I don't know, maybe Chris knows the, the footage from the building to their backyard, but it doesn't look like much.
Right, it's not going to be much, you're right. We can add that in there too. Okay, Mr. O'Brien?
I got it.
Add it to, adds towards the other street too.
Thank you.
Could we have a motion, please, Mr. O'Brien?
Sure. Uh, Mr. Chairman, regarding case number Z-eight, Triple Flag Motors, Inc., hospital, vetiquet and treasurer for a special permit of a motor vehicle general repair on the premises numbered one sixty-six Washington Street. I'd like to make a motion to grant the requested um, special permit. Now with the subject of the following conditions. All repairs that will be done inside and the rest storage for any parts and pieces to be picked up. Uh, fencing will be on the church side in the rear of the building to be determined by Mr. Duke or Mr. Harrington, looking for a wood slotted fence or a plastic vinyl, non-seethrough. Pookie dookie.
On the motion, seeing none, can we have a roll call?
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Hemmo?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Jeff Frankel?
Yes.
Martin Nigga?
Yes.
Thank you.
So Brian, can I have a motion, motion to, uh, are we, anything else? Anyone, yeah, anyone else want to discuss anything first before we do a adjourn? You're welcome, Mr. Down.
I think I'm good.
Alright, we're all good? Motion adjourned?
Motion for adjourned, please.
Checking it.
Thank you.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Cheers.
Have a good night.
Enjoy, enjoy the couple of weeks.